I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, the previous meeting.
Need to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and two seconds.
Any additions or requests to this? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries. Uh, bills.
Is there anything that's been pre- or presented?
No, it's pretty.
So I'm on the highly list, so I'll motion later.
I saw that. So. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve payment bills. Further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor.
Brett?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports. You know what order they're in.
No one with a report due yet.
We did.
These crazy spendings.
Questions? I obtain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve financial reports. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries. Agenda, um, can I inform you we have to add a special permit approval at the end of new business? Excuse me, does anybody else have anything to add to the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
All right, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Special permit app. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries and the agenda is set. For something, you see what you said, John, good morning.
It's been a busy summer with a lot of activities, um, between 4H, W and A. So our first updating from the last meeting, whenever that was, um, we had the junior crop scout camp, which is at, was at Lake Region State College. And we had 10 participants, we had this basic weed insect disease ID and insurance scouting. We'll be having a follow-up event here later. We also had, we held a babysitting class this summer for 10 participants. Uh, they were able to get PPR certified and, and also in first aid. And we also had a home loan, are you ready class in July? And we were able to bring in the police department, the fire department, um, Lake Region District Health Unit and, um, go over all sorts of safety aspects of staying home alone. So we were able to, uh, bring in about 22 participants with that. That's a good one. Um, we also had ATV safety, um, paired up with the North Dakota Parks District. And they do free classes and get kids helmets. So that's always exciting to see kids learning how to do things safely, um, at a young age. So they're ready to go and get their license for that. Uh, we also had our, we wrapped up our Ramsey County 4H summer mini camps, which goes to like 20th with the outdoor skills camp. That was hosted at White Horse Hill, um, catching different aquatic insects. And, uh, kids enjoyed that tracks with other wildlife. And we have part- participants there as well. Yeah, and then we just wrapped up our fair season, state fair, um, ended last week. And so we had a busy achievement days, um, here with, uh, over 350 static projects. It was, which was still, whi- which was pretty good. Um, and then we also had our project expo, uh, where participants, um, kind of described projects and communication skills and whatnot. And then we just wrapped up last week with a North Dakota State Fair. We had over 173 static projects displayed there. Uh, we had our livestock, which included beef, sheep, pigs and rabbits brought from the county. For our communication arts, we had three presentations and five participants. Project Expo, four participants. Holding review, four participants. Um, horses, we had eight participants bringing home 34 awards. I know, we were busy. Oh my goodness, I can't believe it. Um, we had, overall, we had six grand champions. And if we add the horses, we'll have 14 total reserve grand champions. We have two and add the horse events, that'd be 11 total. Four awards of excellence. And Ramsey County also received the county herdsman award, um, which is presented to a 4H club being the best herdsman within each species. Yeah, that's a pretty prestigious award in the horse world for cats.
You know the 350 projects that we did in the month of 2013, is that because of all the cloverbuds?
You're, you're exactly right. Yeah, the cloverbuds take a good percentage of our projects. Because, simply because there's really little limit.
Right, yep.
Which is, yep, exactly right. Yeah, um, our next, the kind of our, my follow-up event from the junior crop scout, uh, camp is our field day next week at Langton. We have seven kids signed up. Um, so we're gonna just kind of get them through the, in the field, basically the three hours and look at things and have them fill out a crop scout sheet. And it'll be exciting to see how much they learn and retain. Yeah, and then we're gonna kind of wrap up our, our summer, uh, 4H with the family fun night. Uh, that's coming up on August 11th at 6:30. We, uh, actually rented the, the pool. So, um, the kids will be able to swim, but we'll do awards. And then this is kind of our, um, kind of promoted to families that are interested in joining 4H. So they're welcome to, to join in that event as well. So it's kind of just a fun kickstart to the new year. And it is in 11, yep, August 11th, so I saw it 6:30. And we will have a, uh, food and awards and then we'll move into swimming. Um, and then one thing, or yeah, does anybody have any questions? Yeah.
No, no comments. It was very good at state fair, I know that. Good luck projects.
Yeah, yeah, I know there, there were some families that stayed the whole week.
Yes.
I don't know how they do it.
He was just like that a little shorter.
A lot of family bonding, right?
What a real, a lot of bonding, yeah.
State 4H shooting sport should be, shotgun should be wrapping up this, is it next week?
That is coming up, yes. I know Cindy's been working hard on, um, getting all the flights scheduled and whatnot. So, yeah, so that, that is coming up. I think Ramsey County is bringing probably about half of the participants.
As we do.
Yeah, yeah, so they've been working hard all summer, shooting and. Oh, one thing that we, but we've kind of talked about too is, um, just kind of wanted to put a bug in your ear about, we've had some cooking classes downstairs in the, uh, the large meeting room. We actually brought in from CMS some kids before their exploratories. Um, gosh, what did, did we bring in about 40 kids? Yep, and two flights and, um, lots of dishes happening. Uh, so there's no dishwasher downstairs. We did kind of talk to Roger a little bit and he said there might be a, a location for a dishwasher. Just kind of looking at maybe like the food safety aspect of keeping everything clean. And the water doesn't get very warm to wash the dishes. So I don't know if that's something that we could ever possibly get downstairs. Um, as, as we're kind of picking up in more face-to-face programming, uh, post-COVID, uh, that, things like that are starting to happen. Uh, so that might be something that might not be a bad idea downstairs.
Where could you put it?
There actually, there is an opening right underneath one of the countertops. I think it's near this thing. Here, on this wall. So, I mean, if it's something Roger could investigate a little bit more or. Right between the stove and the. Exactly. Yep, there's nobody there.
Let's look into it. Well, Roger, I'm a person, yeah? He marked my portfolio, so. I'll kill him, bro. Did you get that idea? Well, yours?
Thank you.
All right, any questions for session, any people? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, Scott from the airport, welcome.
Morning, Mr. Wolf.
On the cut.
I don't know what you guys want to hear of. I think you have that copy on my buddy. Is there any question on it here? I do have a couple of updates on, we just recently got our insurance bills from, uh, the agent. And they're, uh, they've increased by about 30, $300 more than I had in the budget originally. That's gonna put us a little bit of a debt there.
And we went through, uh, as an airport board, we went through an improved budget last week. And, uh, we thought everything looked good. Trying to keep costs low as, as we continue to, uh, move through our expansion projects for the next couple of years.
What, you're going on pretty early expansion project?
Yeah, they're, um, they're set to be bidding here now in the next, uh, month and a half, I think. We're putting it out for bids, wherever it is moving forward, pretty well. Everything except the cost.
Yeah.
That's true.
Like, like everything else, we've experienced some cost increases. And, um, some of the bid projects that we had, was that one this summer that came in 50% higher than?
Yeah.
What we had originally expected?
We, we had a taxiway apron improvement project on that the engineers estimated around 1.7 million. And the bids came in at 3.1 million. So that cuts your, you know, your funding quick. And they had, like our terminal expansion, we were, well, the, our SRE building we were planning on doing, um, they were figuring right around 250, $300 a square foot for that building. And they just compared it to a school they built in West Fargo, which came in at $525 a square foot. So costs are huge and we think we're gonna end up cutting some of our projects due to that. So, um, today's environment isn't good for construction.
Was there any grants involved in that?
Yeah, this is all cares grants. Um, we had, we received 16.8 million dollar cares grants, um, which we have to have spent by July of 2024. And that's where these, the money's coming from for our aerial project and the other ones that we have. But unfortunately, we think we're gonna run short. And that's 100% matching, um, uh, 100% funding, no matching funds on that. So that was a real boost for the airport to be able to do some of this stuff. Pretty thankful for what we got.
Right.
It was a, it was a calculation error in the FAA's part, however they calculated this. Otherwise we probably would've got, what, I think it was like 160,000 or something like that.
Yeah.
And we ended up getting 16.8 million, so wow.
I couldn't complain, but it sounds like they need to come.
And, and then they waited, they waited almost 14 months to decide how we could spend it, if we were gonna get to keep it, you know, and stuff like that. They didn't ex- extend our, our time period to spend it. We still have, now we're down to what was less than three years to get it done, so. It's a big rush out there to get all this stuff accomplished by that time.
And we can't go without thinking Scott and our fortune and Mr. Olsen Dennis back there. Uh, they've done an awful lot of work and stepped up and, um, in the midst of all this money coming in and the projects going on and, um, switch over from managers and things like that. So, but Scott has done a tremendous job as well as Dennis and spent an awful lot of time out there. And so can't thank them both enough.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions on anything or?
Questions? Hearing none. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you, Dennis.
Water Resource Districts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, not too many changes for us, I guess. Basically, um, our office staff, of course, as you guys know, we're just down to the one. Kenzie, um, is assisting when needed. But, um, other than, other than that, everything is pretty consistent. Um, like, of course, our payroll taxes go down. Um, we are looking to actually suspend our Starkweather Cooley assessment. So, um, up on the top with the Stark, the Starkweather Cavalier pony, um, that will probably be removed. We had a joint board meeting last week just due to the funds that we have in our, um, Starkweather Cooley account. We're thinking of suspending it for one year, the assessments. Um, other than that, there hasn't, there aren't too many changes from last year.
Give an assessment and vote.
This carries. Any questions?
Can I have a look pretty straightforward?
Sorry, I'm breathing.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Thank you, Steve. Looks good.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All righty. Mr. Drager, morning.
Good morning. So I come to you guys on behalf of the Lake Region UAS team. I know back in November, you guys funded the project, uh, for some operational costs back in November. So we decided on, uh, I know it was, it was going to buy some pro- buy some products and some, I decided to hold off due to inflation being astronomical and some of that stuff. So I'm just looking for the commission to keep funding the drone team and to make it a, a comment where we can just keep building it. Because then we can, whatever we say, we can use for the future, finding new products as these, uh, other projects, uh, products. Hey, Joe.
Steve, talk to me about some batteries that we need, all right?
Actually just purchased some batteries. Um, we probably need more.
Is that like, is that like a lithium battery then?
Yeah. Very expensive, I suppose, super expensive. One little battery was 700 bucks and it takes two to take off. Yeah. And as we keep progressing, the age of our aircraft has to be.
Right.
The new ones are turning away.
Right now, this one's doing the purpose, right?
What's that?
This one's doing the purpose that we need right now, right?
Absolutely.
And we own it ourselves now.
Yep. And we have three aircraft in the fleet. Um, one was the very original one, which is, is at its end of life. That is end of life, uh, was purchased along with us in 700. Or 100. Okay, longer than 700, it's way past end of life. Um, and we now have two operational, fully operational drones, one heavy wind and one light wind.
And they're being utilized all the time. Talking with Steve and Chris on that, and they're really being well utilized and, and not just sitting collecting dust. So I think it'd be an important item to continue in our budget process, uh, keep in there. And hopefully that, uh, that line item can grow and have some sort of reserve. So when, uh, big projects or big, uh, purchases need to be made, the money is made available or readily available for them. Cause I think those drones are upwards of 25 to 40,000 dollars for anyone.
What we're looking at now, the work in most of North Dakota windows up to 75,000.
75,000.
Yeah, but it's got the longest flight time it can last in them.
Wow.
And just talking about how often we've been utilized, we have over 185 hours of mission. 100 and over 150 safe landings and hazardous times and conditions.
So is there any trading value on the ones that we have?
Sadly, that's the tough part.
I like a bull in a.
Yeah. They become training, like the, the original one that was purchased a long time ago, so now I'm in training here all. If you have some of the capabilities, you can train on it. That's a nice point.
Train on stuff, so if, if you're learning and something bad happens.
Yeah, we learned that really quick earlier this year.
Well, my question would be, you know, are we gonna delineate it as a separate line? Or do we want to put it in somebody's budget, like the sheriff's department's budget as a line item? Or, yeah, I would assume, or how, how do we want to handle that?
I think I do. What do you think?
Well, I think if you want to continue to build it, then you're gonna have to not make it a general fund account.
Right, right.
Because if you don't, because if you don't extend, you know, if you don't extend at the end of the year, it all goes back into.
How do, how do we go about making it not a general fund account?
Um, that's just me setting up an account.
No, it's not.
So, so we got a lot of things for it. We don't have a shield for it. We don't have a blind eye to it.
How much did we, did we put into it? Is that correct?
18,000, like 18,000.
Yeah, I've been using it for fuel to, in the command unit to operate and.
And that's not a good reason.
That wouldn't be for repair, like a battery and, uh, we need some above the, like, all that.
Well, that's what it, uh, comes currently been used for. Um, we, we really held back on purchasing computers, which was a big, it was a big expense. Uh, they were so marked up, even Steve's still looking at computers as a high. I don't think it does, yeah. I hope it does.
Did either of you include this into your budget for next year? No?
I did not, cause I want to talk about this straightforward with you guys.
Okay.
So what kind of, what kind of dollar figure are we thinking, uh, in the basis right now?
What do you think, Doug? 5, 5,000? Um, it'll take a long time to build for, for upgrading. If we look at the loan on, I mean, if we can do 10. And, you know, at the end of the, end of the day, if it all becomes unusable, it just goes to next year. You know, and if we have a huge surplus budget, it could be moved off to the sheriff's office or something else for, or, or back to the general for that matter.
These, these drones we, we have, how were they acquired? Did we have grant funding?
The one we bought was ARPA.
ARPA, that's right.
We used that for ARPA last year.
That's right.
I think they had the city bought the second one.
That's right, okay.
And the first one, that was initially bought by the 4H from the U.C.
Yeah.
And it was repaired, that's the third one.
Okay.
Then I think the city bought, there is a.
So it's been pretty much all local dollars that have paid for everything. There's not, there's not grant funding out there or anything like that, these kinds of.
Grant's not covered drones, that's the hard part.
I thought it, take some of that first ARPA money and start to fund, you know, 10 or 15 thousand.
The fif- the original 15 came from COVID funds.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause so the emergency manager is in a separate budget. He is not, he's not, uh, under general. So we can say that other emergency manager probably would make. I just figured, you don't need a separate delineate or separate line, separate page, you can just put it on.
Right.
Under somebody's budget, just so there's oversight on the dollars more than anything, I think.
Absolutely. And like you said. It was a next step, we can always put it back in the general.
How much do you left out of 15, huh?
What's that?
How much do you left out of 15?
I did not check that. Um, I'm guessing probably close to 12,000. I mean, there's quite a bit, we haven't spent barely anything.
Yeah, you're just trying to, you're just trying to build it. Yeah.
To maintain it in the future, when you're looking at. Yeah, maintain it all to the future.
Make sure we get it on this year's, or the budget for next year's.
Yeah.
Basically, right now, you're looking at 5,000, 7, 500.
I was, I was hoping closer to 10 because of the, the, we'll, we'll need a new drone before we can ever find that, that money. And hopefully in that future, there will be something more available for us.
That's something everybody can do, that's the whole community, because that is.
Been a star, has it?
You were even on standby for Grand Forks at one point here earlier, last month.
Last month?
Yeah. I mean, we're, it's a great tool, we.
That's what you were taking pictures with during the flood, right?
Mm-hmm, yep. That was actually amazing, Steve was super proud of that. They're like, it's great when you look at a picture from standing in the framework versus.
It was a great capability for us and for Kevin to be able to present some of that stuff.
All those pictures you're on.
And the more you have it, the more you realize what we can use it for. There are other things that we can use it for and not just, what we use it for. I mean, uh, I said a flood is a perfect example, or we have a severe storm.
Even if you were searching for a lost person or something.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think that's what the, I mean, going around the other stuff is valuable, but it definitely is huge valuable. Cause if you're in a situation where it's dangerous or something, you can send a drone out, stay where it's safe and people look for a survivor or somebody and not for one of our responders in, in, in a tough situation, having to look for people. Or like you said, going to look for damage or something on roads or almost anything, it's really valuable.
And actually assisting on Spirit Lake, we've used it several times to, um, of course, it has to be written into a search warrant, which has been granted every time, but we'll send the drone in if we're looking. They've had a couple of murder suspects out there that we, FBI have been looking for. So we'll send the drone in and actually fly it out. Looking in the windows, seeing if we can see where they are, kind of see what they're at. Someone aren't jumping around as handy person, they're still a half mile away. But the drone can actually go and sit cover there and look in windows and, and kind of give us a, you know, something. There's a lot of valuable, uh, opportunities here.
Yeah.
To keep, uh, safety issues.
I'll keep that in mind.
It has to be done on the search warrant. We can't do that to anybody. It has to be legitimate, it has to be done, that's all we can do.
You put some more curtains.
I mean, it's a whole herd of shit.
You know, it shouldn't happen a lot of it.
Yeah, it's a very useful tool, you know, I mean, round this lake, if somebody gets a jump out there. We got six or eight foot waves out there. And you want to put people in jeopardy, then send this out there and if it goes in to drink, well. I think we just replace it.
See, the rules are so restrictive, we couldn't apply it at, uh, the NAYL thing in Lake, because it's an old final. So. We're in Air Force Bureau, so we can't fly it. So we had to just sit there and we couldn't even fly it around part of that because of the rules.
Right.
That's something we are working on though, you have to get special exceptions from the FAA. And it will be coming, it just, it's the FAA.
I would say when we're following the rules specifically, we, we have to, like, there is no anything full of board if anybody questions it. I mean, it's all done as per the rules we have to follow with the FAA and that's what, all of our total loss, so.
That's it. It's the equivalent all community can use and that's going. Who's gonna benefit next? You know, whether that ARPA money or the COVID money, it'd be.
We still got money, you said that first COVID, but, so. Kat, you said that it probably makes the most sense to set it up under its own line item just for higher accounting purposes, so if we're final.
Basically looking for a motion, how much?
Yes. That would be, how much would it be?
How, how much in a separate line item?
Throw a number out, huh?
Throw a, throw a number out, 30? Yeah, I'm okay with that. But let's, I'll do a motion for 30,000 on a separate line item for the, the drone program.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Do, do we want to include in that motion that we will roll the dollars? We've already appropriated over into that same line item? Or does that? Or does that matter? Do we just do that immediately anyway?
I'll just, I'll do a letter of transfer.
Okay, and then we can just do, then we can just do that. That's just so we're making sure we're accounting properly for the audit.
Yeah, yeah.
So make sure we. Okay, that would be just fine. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to take thirty thousand dollars of the initial COVID funds that we still have sitting and, uh. Develop a separate line item, we're going forward for drone funding for the. Drone, well, I don't know what the term is.
Like region U A S D.
Like region U A S D. Further discussion on that motion. You're a nun on the table by saying aye?
Aye.
Vote same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, Sheriff, you're up. You don't know why you're here.
I got here because of my task force.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, Kathy, Kathy is.
For a real, we'll be talking. Um, so I guess I'm just here to answer any questions about what's going on or what needs to be done or. Currently, the city of Devils Lake, since we initially started this, the city had. Half of the first employee, we only covered one. The city had the majority of that employee, we'd be in the other half, one with the other colonies. Well, since we've increased and grown, now we have one and a half, and the city has one, and then the other colonies have the other half. So the city initially was set up to cover all the grant money and they were doing great. Well, things changed over there, things kind of got. Really. Uh, muddled. So, since we have the vast majority of the personnel. We thought it was in our best interest for Ramsey County to take over managing the grant, or the task force. So basically, right now, I think my line on this slash year was ninety-five thousand, we just paid, you write a check to the city for whatever they. You know, I think it's ninety, it was ninety-two.
Yeah, it's ninety.
Ninety? So we write a city, and then every month, they bill us, we bill them back for wages, they pay us back and.
Steve, so this this task force, when the guard was helping, was that part of this ninety-five thousand or were they paying that?
No, no, the guard was just basically giving that. As a as a free.
We don't get that anymore?
We haven't had one of those for a couple years.
So is that?
They were basically.
The question, the reason I'm asking is I see mine at Bismarck Fargo, they still have it? Because we, I see the applications come through.
They might have. Okay.
Is there something that we have to apply for for that, or that's not a good, I mean.
I'm sure check with Travis.
Like, you know what I'm saying? Was that a good thing?
They were, they basically analyzed, uh, when they think they were ending, they were, that was their profession.
And that wasn't costing us anything.
No, that was just assigned them to the task force for a period of time, and then when those people moved on, it's kind of, and then they have another one move in that had time, they said another one, yeah.
The reason I ask, is I know they're having trouble getting people to do it in Bismarck, so maybe they could move that here.
Good, that'd be great. Yeah, the more we can get for.
I I saw the question that you probably should ask.
Yeah, what, you know?
Because if they're allowing it there, I imagine if you don't ask, you're not gonna get it. That's the only.
And I think it's been a couple years, so it's probably off the radar already. You know, so they're not thinking about it. Before it was kind of fresh, and I, we got a guy we can send over, but we'll revisit that here.
Yeah, cuz it's help for you.
Well, it's it's free help, absolutely, and then they can, they kind of did the conglomerate, did all the statistical stuff, and all the, some of the information, a lot of the information gathering. We're, you know, putting it together and, so it did help.
Yeah, cuz I think you guys had it for like, you had someone on for like three years.
Two or three years, yeah, while it was summer, it was basically.
Yep, but still.
Six or eight months of time, but it was still, that was very valuable, very helpful. So we'll check into that.
And I think the federally funded stuff is still there for that. I think we.
Yeah, that didn't cost, I don't actually, that didn't cost us anything. That was just the guard giving out the person for.
Yeah.
You know, to assist us. Yeah.
Wow, I think we need the house and then go from there.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's the worst thing.
No, that's okay. But anyway, uh, the the grant basically, it's just a pass through. Um, so instead of the counties that are, the other four counties that are involved, we'll just pay us, pay the half of ours. You know what I mean? So instead of paying the city, they'll just be paying, that's about what we do.
Basically, the city's gonna pay us.
No, the city, the city will pay their own boy, they can pay him on their own, the grant on. So we'll have our two, our one and a half plus, uh.
The other grant.
And then the rest is just managing the grant money, which is like I said, a piece of the password. So it's just kind of an accounting thing, uh, to keep track of the seizure money, to keep that separate, you know, anything that is awarded to us for drug seizure money. And I think there's like forty thousand in that account that we found. And then I hope they found, they lost it for a while, but I think we found it now. So, anyway.
Well, I think we used to do a miscellaneous for it.
Yes.
Then we changed it to a different number.
Something like that, but anyway.
That order, your money has to be accounted for separately.
Yeah.
Yeah, that had to do with, yeah, I remember that.
If you remember the, but your life capture made a change in the voltage stuff.
Yeah.
So we just have to account for it separately. But other than that, it's basically just, when they get this, they call the Arrow Grant, cuz that's the federal government. When they get that, that's just money here, and then all you, we have to pay it out, then we request they pay it back, and it's just a pass through. And then we have to do some accounting and some bookwork to keep the state happy, as for like next year's grant funding and so forth and so on.
Well, yes, Kenny's all right with it.
So that's been at work.
Already signed papers.
You don't need our approval, right?
Well, at the end of the day, I think we almost have to, because if it's grant funding, we gotta make sure from our perspective, and we gotta keep the drug task force going, so we gotta make sure.
We're having some trouble with the fund, with the paperwork, we give back to Bismarck. So we can qualify for the grant next year, and that grant gives us a lot of things, as I tell you, it's.
Right.
They bought two, equipped two trucks with it, uh, they got overtime money to utilize for the guys with the grant money, that's zero match. You know, so it's important that we keep that grant funding available.
Uh, it it's unfortunate that, you know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't need a drug task force, but unfortunately.
Right.
Unfortunately, we are very much needed, but I.
Very much needed.
You guys are all aware of that.
Is it large enough?
What's that?
The task force, you got enough people?
Right now, I think we're. Well, I don't ever say it's not big enough, but, uh, see, right now, we have three, plus now they took that Stell down. Was the city employee, well, he got hired out by the B I A, so he left, he's now employed by the B I A, but he's assigned to our task force. And for later to task force, so he, we basically got an extra body there. So we got our three, the city plus our one and a half, you know, plus now Stell is back, uh, with the B I A. Helping us, so we actually have that extra, let's just kind of see where that goes. He's assigned to kind of the, an area, he's not just here. He's got like four, uh, uh, little mountains, and I think he has a little bit of our circle. But he's primarily stationed here, so. So I think we're doing okay at this point, but maybe next year or the year after, we'll have to look at again.
Well, like I said, if you've got that guard personnel.
And that guard, or that just takes paperwork away from our guys, so we have more time to do better, so.
Yeah, you check into that.
Be four and a half or five if they had all this time, you know.
If you're having some trouble with that, let me know on the off contact. But I'd rather have you move through it.
Yeah, we'll start, we'll start it then.
Just give me a call and we'll go through, I'll ask questions.
We need a, uh, a motion for the county to go ahead with that task force.
We should have, except that. Also, I'll move the motion.
Seconded that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, have us take over the accounting and management of the grant funding and, uh, for the drug task force for that. Ramsey County portion as well as the other counties portion. Okay, further discussion.
Along with that, just just so you're aware, we're probably gonna have to issue our two guys, uh, gas cards.
Yeah.
But then that's all, that's all, again, that's all refunded for back to the grant. But, uh, this.
More than there, that we have to do on our share.
Yeah, so it's just us doing it our.
Travel assistance.
Arrow details?
Yeah.
Further questions, discussion? See you then, on the table by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, Steve.
There's something else on page sixteen that I need to. I don't know, as long as I'm here, yeah.
I think she just puts it down because.
Well, the task force is a big thing, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I'm bothered a little bit, it's kind of, you know, there's a lot of things going on, a lot of here. This year, uh, Williston put in for a whole bunch, they didn't use it, so we raised the same thing. Gave them more back to us, which was helpful for us, which is, yeah, so I mean, that grant was so important, and that's why we can make sure it's viable when. And we're getting it done, cuz.
It's some definitely.
The drug thing, I'm going with it.
No, and that's where all those statistics come into play, because, okay, you're doing this, they hate you, there's, there is, they need some more help. We bought a lot of equipment from that grant, and it's it's huge, so we need to keep it up and running, and that's kind of why we decided to come this way with it.
Absolutely, you know, that's fine.
I agree. No, she had it written down because she had, just cuz I put the drug task force number with that.
Oh, okay.
It was on that page.
Just wanna make sure.
So we had, and she had to move it up just a little bit, isn't that? It's one oh six five, it's got that ninety-five yard just because of the.
I I've heard of a couple droppings above, on my salary base, is that something, one of your tasks or?
No, I shouldn't.
I think that, I think that was an accident.
Okay. You get this, I know this one, you could truly, I can explain if I have to, what, what years, why.
In your department?
In my department, yeah. Okay, I'm just making sure. We're good? I know you guys got a lot of things going on right now, a lot of.
There's nothing, nothing, nothing going on.
A lot of questions that have to be answered. Kevin doesn't need to hear you ask. He's kind of staying all the way.
All right.
Okay, further questions?
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Great, yeah. All right, cool, cool. I think I'll start off with road updates, um. We, uh, got a line spanned on our Trixio project and the pre-teen work we were getting done, so that's all done. Um, but I got the career road all gravelled, we still got gravel projects out there on Ramsey Four, South Doian. And by Garski, and. Guess I took the camp to the one south of Church Street, cuz that one underwater.
Went back to where the bridges were, that all went underwater again?
Yeah, like south of the bridge, right, yeah, that one underwater again.
Bridge, is the bridge underwater again?
Bridge, yeah, well, just by the deck, you know, it's not a long stretch, it's a short stretch, it is underwater.
At ten thousand dollars, that'd be, that was. Pretty much that. That was, we didn't have a choice, but still, it's frustrating.
I ain't even four feet of water, that was.
Yeah, right, exactly. Uh, what else? We got, uh, we got done doing our soft spots, uh, doing our soft spots, we're gonna start putting colors in ourselves. This month, a couple weeks. We got quite few to do, we tried to do that when the harvest was going on, so that's why it's scheduled for that type area. And then Ramsey two, all that, all, or Ramsey three, but have the. All of that.
Okay, uh, they got the straight thing on yesterday, they got the crosswalks in today. They got gravity approaches this week, and their completion date's Saturday, so it's good to wrap things up. Um, there'll be one item will work after, like completion date is deceiving, around those through V D A wraps, the intersections, so if that's, but it won't affect traffic, so we're gonna sure go use that. And it's outside the seating window, so I don't want to push it up, push it out. They can't put seed in between, oh, whatever day, July, that ends August tenth, so it'll be a few days after, we should be able to come back and finish that. Um, quantity wise, we did forget the budget on that, um, but they had contaction incentives, um, was about thirty-three thousand for the longitudinal joint D S D and, uh. Kind of paid it, it's came in itself for the overlay, so that was about thirty-two thousand, thirty-two six, I think, and then, um, they opted into the fuel cost adjustment. And you got another fifty thousand for that, so it'll overrun a little bit. It's under on the quantities, but with those two things that are in addition to the bid price, it'll be a little bit over, um, that's all done. But the contaction setup means you're getting a better product too, so it's sort of that, fuel cost adjustment, I'm only, I'm only pro that. And the things turned out good, so we're more to wrap that one up. Um, and Ramsey going four, I'm ready to get the permit from the court for that, um, last month here, so should get that up a bit shorter. We'll structure next year.
Well, any questions on the projects we got going on?
We got a bridge up there in four, that's next year, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't remember when we started planning that, but a bridge project takes years.
Yeah.
Well, I was, it did have to do with wanting to get, let's see, with those pre-bath boxes you couldn't get, correct?
Right.
They were there a meter ago.
And the environmental part held it up too, so.
We got a pretty good guarantee that pre-bath box is gonna be there next year? You use, it'll be here?
Yeah, once we go to the, no, deadline date, but, you know, we're gonna look at the deadline date in our, but, yeah. It'll be up to them then, but.
Oh, so they find the boxes.
Right, right.
They probably have a little bit.
Well, that sounds like one of the suppliers that made some of this, kind of built an indoor facility too, so they'll be in the winter, like the forum was all cast outside.
Oh, hmm.
Interesting.
It looks all right now for this season, I mean, that for the winter, what's up there for the car ride?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 it's a little rough, but I mean, you can still go.
You'll make a tough spring. You'll make a tough spring.
Uh, it's, it's a low tonnage bridge, it's only like fifteen tons or something like that, but.
Well, the main problem, the main problem on it's always been it's got that wood deck on it, and you put pavement on it, and then it shifts, and then the pavement cracks up, and it's just always rougher in the top.
Well, we're up there actually.
Yeah.
Not a good deal.
No, that's, it's got wood, timber end walls and side walls, and, yeah, it's a good, uh, stuff.
See if your passenger pipes are chipping all the time in the asphalt and stuff like that.
If we, if we feel unsafe for the season and the growing, next year?
Yeah.
We don't give a lot of crap.
Yeah, I'm I'm more likely gonna get asked a question tomorrow, you know.
Yeah.
We feeling safe.
Well, it hasn't changed in the last two years. I mean, they should have crossed it, with over fifteen tons, and I don't know what they do, but. Nothing going on for.
Right.
Ten years.
Well, and it's a short bridge too, so you don't ever have a whole truck on either, it's just. We're, it happens to drop a couple actually, with the.
All this tobacco.
Should we slow the traffic down over that thing?
We could, but, um, you know, it's still a weight thing, it doesn't. I mean, if if you got an eighty thousand pound rig going, a forty-five rig going over, it doesn't matter, trick one, five miles an hour.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
I'd rather be going faster.
Yeah. That guy might be able to at least that far.
We'll we'll keep that to the deck to keep the ride moving, but it's still a weight issue.
Hmm, but we think the beams under these are all ready now.
Well, they haven't changed.
So, so the new bridge is to me, to be able to handle all the weight?
Yeah, they're all be over there, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, or no restriction at all?
I don't get any, yeah, log surgery, no guardrails, so we need to watch for the safety, so, you know, it's there.
Yeah, it's needed to be replaced for a while, but it's like anything, you said, it's just a matter of, you know.
Right, yeah.
We've been talking about this for four years, and you get a bridge on the pipeline, and it just takes a rubber, you get it replaced.
I hope we don't have an incident, you know.
Right.
It'll be good.
I'm also hoping that the market settles down a little bit for prices.
Right. I totally think it will.
Without it.
Heard on the news last night, there's a shortage of cement. That's mud.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm glad it been written through, we did.
Yeah, that's true, it was great, like, I just gotta walk you in on that.
I did get a couple questions, when I was up there at that NAC, you see, I look at that stuff from people, and, yeah, we did it at the right time, it was. Way better than just doing it this spring, hell, it worked for a lot of winter, you know.
Yeah, we had, like you said, a slight cost overrun, is not, is reasonable comparatively to, like we said, like, right, runway project was. Over by like almost double, I mean, you know, the cost of things is just escalating so crazy that we thought it got it at the right time.
That's probably due to cement, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz they do that, they do cement on.
Oh, I agree with that, hopefully. That natural, yeah.
It really looks good, it's really, it's really, kind of up there, I like.
Yeah.
We drive way too fast.
Long street, oh.
We put roll strips on where you're being, having some. We put rollable strips on where your beach paddies have been. That's a great group, I don't know, it's kind of a blind stop sign there, for whatever reason, I don't.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's got that little kinda like crest type thing over that little hill.
Yeah, yeah. Like boy, those ripple strips, that was a, that was a big one, yeah.
Yeah, go again.
All right. All right, the Craig's dust control, we put our bag water down, that got all that done, so the bill for that was, uh, twelve thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents, and then we collected twenty-five percent of that from the owners that live nearby, so.
Move to approve.
Yeah, motion to second, Craig's dust control from Bagwater. Further discussion? See, none of, or no, we're actually paying, roll call please, sorry.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion first.
Uh, close construction did get the, uh, career road all gravel now, so that's done, and the invoice for that was fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to pay that.
Motion to pay.
Sorry. Yeah. The motion is second to pay close construction for the Craig, uh, Craig Road gravel project. Further discussion? See, none, roll call please.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. What carries?
Uh, K L J, uh, invoice for the inspection they did on a paving project on Ramsey three. That was twenty thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Motion to pay that.
So. Sorry. Got a motion to second to pay K L J, uh, for uh, inspection engineering on the, uh, project on Ramsey three A, uh, further discussion? Here, none, roll call please.
Isa.
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Isa. Oh, Lightfoot.
Aye.
Sam.
Lisa.
I'm writing letters.
Well, at least. Okay.
Um, did get the three new rigs for the three new waterators from Martin's Welding and Machine. And that was seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty for all three of them. That's, I don't know if you guys have heard any comments about those, but that's one of the better things to ever purchase. Even the guys that operate them said we should have had these years ago.
So what does the rake do?
It, you know, well, like this time of year when they're holding their ditches and all that grass comes up out of the road. And then these rigs will shove it back down in the ditch.
Oh, okay.
So it's, you know.
Tilted sideways and then it kinda gets the edge off, so you can cut real nice along the corner, along each other.
One of the reasons I, I asked is because I had an individual contact being, was wondering why they weren't cutting the grass on the ditch and pulling the gravel back up, I said, well, that's usually a spring, right? And then the township usually asks for that, correct?
Right.
And that's what I said, so you need to go to the township if you want that done in the spring to have, you, let you know that they want that done, right?
Yeah, you don't want, you don't wanna do it at this time of year too much, because you'll have a bunch of.
It was just a question asked, and they didn't realize that they have to ask the township to have you do that, so we're not just gonna go out we, I, when I was a kid, we used to call it farm, the road in the spring. You know, if they want that done, they have to ask the township to ask, right, and I let them know, and they were cool about it, they just were curious of why.
Some people actually hate it when that happens, so, you know, it's a thing where you, we want them to request it, so they're saying, yeah, we need to.
Well, then they can tell their patrons, uh, they request it, you know?
And if they don't like that in the spring too, you can use the road reclaimer first and then pull, because that reclaimer did a really nice job, and they did some of that on the box, like road reclaimer to me, and that did a really nice job with the high full edges back, you know?
I like it because it seems like it widens the road back out, you know, the grass over time.
Yeah, well, you're always gonna have gravel on those edges, just moving it back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it, it worked really well.
Yeah, we had the rigs from Martin's Welding, and they're of seventeen thousand three twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second. Yeah. The motion is second, hey, Martin's Welding for the new rigs with motorators. Further discussion on the motion? Here, none, roll call please.
Volk.
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, the gravel truck that we took over to East Grand Forks to get it fixed, Nelson International, the bill on that was four thousand two hundred and eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Some kind of sensor in the uh regen process. Yeah, we. We haven't watched that yet, but it's done.
Yeah. I do have one question, has there, was there a reason why we took it to International and not Prairie Truck?
We took it to Prairie Truck and they diagnosed it for us. And they were actually scared to do.
Okay.
Ask to not do it, I mean, how, how do I say this, like?
They don't want, and that, that's cool, I just wanna make sure that we use the roll call before.
Yeah, we did.
Truck is very new, right?
They recommend that we take it.
Awesome. Yep, and then I just wanted to make sure that we just didn't take off out of the.
E computer, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, once you get into that, yeah, once you get into specific things, then you almost wanna take it to a place where it's a dealership.
Right. To be quite honest, you didn't wanna start putting parts into it.
Oh, yeah, that's fair enough. Yeah, that's fair enough.
The one I guess.
Well, I suppose every specific dealership has the technology specific to those type of things to be able to diagnose better.
Exactly, right, yeah. And that, that, that technology is constantly changing, so.
It's expensive.
Then they keep up with that, it's, uh, costly.
Like I said, they can do a basic diagnosis and say, this is where the problem is, but we can't, we can't with all those specific parts, you know? It's, it's good an M B to not just start chasing it too, and to tell us, hey, please, around, yeah, be honest with these, it's a good thing.
There's the expense of those computers.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of have a different computer for trucks and combines and.
All that regen.
Every year is different.
All that regen stuff is, yeah. Yeah, I guess we need a motion to pay for that then.
Motion to move. Pay.
All right. Yeah, we have a motion to second, pay Nelson International, uh, to fix his truck. Further discussion? Here, none, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye.
Well, this is a heads up for, a while back, we, one of our, one of our older trucks wasn't shifting the transmission. And we ended up the Butler, and they put a rear oil pump on, nobody could tell us. We finally diagnosed it ourselves. The batteries have to be a certain level or the transmission will shift. So we'd sit for a couple, three days, and the batteries would drain just a little, but it's still starting, but there was a little, there wasn't enough battery juice to shift that transmission. I know.
Yep. What was this on?
That was one of our automatic power trucks.
Right.
And we had it everywhere, trying to get it, figure out.
That's one of the Allison's, right?
Yeah, Allison, yeah.
Same, we have the same issues.
Uh, just an, battery, juice in the batteries, uh.
So when you start it up, it won't go, but you just have, you can let it idle on the alternator or take the batteries out.
Well, it takes forever from the alternator.
Just stay it forever.
So we got, we actually put one of those, uh, chargers that you plug in at night.
A tender.
The thing, yeah.
And.
Works fine. So I'm telling you, this technology stuff is just great.
Well, there's, I've been talking with other, with other people that, you know, you're looking at like auction sales now, there's a lot of these late nineties to early two thousands tractors and stuff like that, that are going for huge money because people are getting into the new stuff, and the technology is just so, it's just getting so expensive to fix things and stuff, that guys are going back to you can put a copper key in it, a little work there. You know, like, there's huge money in these, in, in good quality, only model tractor.
Okay, uh, next, we got some, uh, culverts from New True North Steel, mostly for resale. Uh, they were forty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. The motion to pay them.
Move through.
Second.
Yeah. Motion to second to pay True North Steel for culverts for resale. Further discussion? Here, none, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries.
I have two more to add, we get bird harvesting, fixed two more, uh, penal sites for us. Um, bridge sites, uh, uh, the two sites together were four thousand thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. So I need motion to pay for those two sites, so.
Second.
Right, motion to second to pay for harvesting for fixing. For what's for us? Further discussion? Here, none, roll call please.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Isa.
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries.
And since we got done with our subs, fixing our soft spots, we took our rental Skins deer rental back to iron hard equipment, and the cost on that was four thousand twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents, so we need that motion. Move to approve, second.
Yeah. Motion to, uh, motion to second to pay for the Skins deer rental there. Further discussion on that? Here, none, roll call please.
Isa.
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries.
That's all I got for Bill, but a little, well, you know, just to bring your attention, uh, Gary Fenner is gonna be, be retiring in November, so I don't even talk to Brian about this yet, but we'll probably be advertising like towards the end of this month sometime for help, just get someone in place.
How many years has Gary happened?
Uh, most of thirty, not quite twenty.
A lot, long time.
That's a starter weather area, right?
Yeah.
So it's just more of a heads up to me, if you see the badge on paper or somebody asks or whatever you know.
A good employee, yeah.
Congratulations, Sam, get everything.
Yeah. All I got.
All right, anything else for Kevin?
Right. I have one thing, Kevin, uh, I would have said Peterson Arena, that culvert you guys put in, we put some rock over it. Would it be possible to get some gravel put in there and just blade that rock? Now that we, now it's holding, you know, just before it was settling, now they put like some, I don't know, like half inch rock in it? Maybe just put gravel over that, so it don't move that rock out, and then just blade the whole thing if you could? That'd be great, you guys could do that.
Sure.
That way we can get it all to settle off by the winter. I appreciate it.
Right, maybe we'll wait for some moisture to, yeah.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be awesome.
After we get rid of the.
They just ask because of the rock in there, and then when they had the radio and stuff, it packed it really good.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay. Good deal. All right, very good, thanks Kevin.
We need to.
One other thing, I'm sorry.
Don't go again.
The, when the, um bike path was put in? Did you have anything to do with that as far as, oh, by the golf course?
Uh, that wasn't a county project, but, uh, I think the township helped us with maintenance on.
Okay, so the maintaining would be to contact the township or?
I don't know, we, we, it's probably due for a amount of seal, seal code, but it's something comes up about every six years, about the time, seal one, our Ramsey coming one, it's a totally different type of seal, we can't use the same contractor type of thing for it.
I just had, uh, two or three patrons ask me about it, who maintains it? But I don't know, it's something that we check out.
Well, it's kind of a shared thing, even the parts and wrecks will use their, uh, stuff to move the snow off it.
That's what Terry said, that they use, usually push the snow off of, but I was just curious of who maintains it? Just because I got the question asked, I didn't know if it's something we made.
It's really a shared thing, I think, okay. Nothing right, yeah.
So who ramrod, did you ramrod that, or?
When we do the seal project, I, I start.
What they want, what did they want done to it?
A sealing, because they're, they're getting cracks in it, I think they're concerned that they don't want it to go beyond that, so that it costs a ton of money.
Right.
I don't know.
It's about there now, so we should probably, I didn't throw it on my twenty-three budget, though. My twenty-three, but we should probably look at doing that soon.
Okay. I didn't know how it was done.
Well, we.
I asked Andy, and Andy was.
Well, that are right away, correct? Yeah, and we've had to approve changes to it in the past, when we've had people put, uh, engine, uh, any kind of things that have happened to it, so.
I'm just curious, do some people have put, have just put driveways across it? Is that legit, or? They're paving driveways across it, so now I think it's doing this number, or is that something we should be concerned about?
There's a big transition there, I haven't looked at it.
They just, they just had this done, so.
We have, we approve putting in, uh, approach across it in one spot.
Right. And how we favor the approach, that's what we thought, I don't know.
That's that approach in there.
Payment that goes over the top, if they cut it back, I haven't looked at it.
I haven't either, it's just, I was wrapping my attentions.
Want me to take a look at it?
Yeah.
I'll look at it. That's all, I promise.
It's okay, I like questions, I love. It's, it's good, it's good to learn. Know what's going on there. Okay, very good, thanks Kevin. Okay, new business, home site credits.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion is second to approve more home site credits. Further discussion? Here, none, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Full same side? Motion carries. Excuse me. Uh, Andy first discussion, um. I guess we can correct this, since it's on the agenda, it doesn't have a whole lot of I guess we can correct this since it's on the agenda, doesn't have a whole lot of context, uh, who put us on the meeting following last meeting executive session to discuss, uh, this N P first issue that we have had put in front of us. I guess we, we decided we needed a couple weeks just to kind of think about it, basically at that point. Any discussion on it or anything else?
You guys got the information?
Yeah, we, we got the information we talked about.
I think we just move forward.
Yeah, we just turn already up. Big nerd, but. I'll make the moment.
Okay, so we have a motion to the second to then declare the employee, the twenty twenty employee and, or the paperwork first to make a determination on payment. So we have a motion to the second, that works for motion to second there, is there, I said? Yeah, further discussion on that motion then.
Do we need to be any more specific with that as far as dates or anything like that or?
Good question.
Will they take care of that, will they?
Yeah, I think they are, when they look at that, they're gonna go back and.
So yeah, so N P first will, um, you guys will make this determination, twenty twenty, that'll trigger for them to, um, we'll send them a payroll worksheet for that time period. And they'll compound the interest of who, what's owed here, what's owed from the employee and employer, and we'll get that number. We pay it, then we gotta figure out what to do with Mark, you know, how to, uh, work it out with Mark and pay their portion, that's, that'll be the.
That should just be closure.
That'll have to come from, you know, the commission.
Cause once they decide and then we come to the closure and then that's done deal.
Yeah, we.
The way I am, right of order.
Or, or center told or the guidelines.
Right.
Further discussion, question?
Just one question, I'm a little lost here. On, uh, her share, she banners here, that's what we were going, is that correct? She said that she would, yes, but there's been some, well, question about that at some points through all this, in my one year tenure here.
I don't think we can.
No, I don't think we can either.
You know, we don't with anybody else.
No, I think she has to come up with her share because that's how it works, you put in.
Yeah.
And it's automatic thing, so it's, if you, if they don't put in, you can't put a match on it.
Right.
Right.
But this gets figured out, I would suggest we do it. I'm only able to have their check ready and she'll have to put her money in there also for this.
I think first is gonna say that she has to.
Well, N P first, yeah, N P first has said, first of all, one check will cover the bill. Uh, separate one from her, you have a one for us. It'll be one check. And they didn't care how they paid her portion to the county, you do, one month sum, you wanna work out a payment plan, you, whatever you wanna do. From her. From her.
So we'll have to come up, once we get the numbers, we'll have to come to an agreement with her at that point on how to handle her portion. Under the premise that we're gonna ask her to handle her portion because we think we have.
Yeah.
So you're thinking we just deal with it then, when we find out?
Okay, we gotta, we gotta see what we're, what the dollar figures are gonna be.
Well, because they're gonna tell you what her portion would be and what our portion.
Right.
They're gonna give us those numbers.
Yeah, I, her portion, I think is, is quite simple, I mean, it's just simple payroll numbers.
Yeah.
Percentage, yeah, it's roughly twenty-five dollars. From my estimate, but our portion, you know, compound interest over years, that'll be interesting to see what our number is up to. And again, N P first is not gonna throw any numbers, uh, you guys made that twenty twenty determination and now we'll use, uh, minutes for those to them, which you guys made that, so they're gonna, they'll start the calculation. With the payroll record.
Okay.
You're alright with this Candy?
It's just done.
The only way we can do it, right?
But I think it's at some point then too, we'll have to, they're, I mean, once they come up with a determination, we'll have to look at two, if it's an option to do something with insurance or anything like that. Two, if it's an error or mission they're taking, or, well, uh, there's gonna be more discussion around this as we move forward about how it's gonna be paid for, but this is the first step in moving towards a conclusion and and making, making sure we handle the records.
Make it right.
Yeah, make it right.
Yeah, that's it. And I was kind of saying, what's the N P first view, is this make it right thing, help you, uh, make the determination, uh, whether that twenty twenty's where, in that timeframe, I don't know, that's your decision. If it's twenty decision, you know, that's your decision, so.
And that's what we discussed, right? Maybe last week, or two weeks. Okay, further discussion on the motion then, or question? Hearing none, I'll, we'll call this one.
Issa, aye. Paul.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye. Well, carries. Okay, very good, thanks Brett. Uh, pre-line budgets. That's mills shooting in front of us and zero increase and.
You want to do special, you want to do special permit first and then talk about it? Yeah, finished.
Moving on. Good call. We have a motion to the second to appear with the motion, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by saying aye. Alright, full same side. Yeah, we're jumping out. Motion carries, okay, now we'll go to budget. Uh, as you can see in front of you, Candy, got the numbers from the states. For the central, centralized utilities and all that good stuff, um, slight increase in value there here over the year. Health insurance, we got back that, a couple days after that last meeting and it's a two point three percent increase there and then vision and dental were basically a wash up and down. So, two point three percent across the board increase there on the soft loss cost and all that good stuff. So we're looking at preliminary budget number right now of, uh, going from ninety-nine point four four mills to a hundred and five point oh nine. Uh, with the mill valuation increase, uh, from sixty-six three ninety and change to sixty-eight eight oh one and change. Uh, so a total value or a total, uh, property tax budget increase locally from six point six million to seven point five million for a nine hundred two thousand nine seventy-eight increase. Which, uh, comes to then two point five four percent on a mill value, but not, if not that, you know, that's accounting for the fact that there's an increase in the mill value. So if we're talking overall budget increase, obviously it's more than two point five four percent, I don't know what. That's a big number, so.
Total budget overall increased million. To last year.
Well, twelve percent total, if you're not talking the mill increase. Basically a fairly, fairly similar budget to last year, other than the fact that we have an increase in, well, what, five hundred thousand of that plus this law enforcement center and, and additional dollars in the law enforcement.
Share.
Shares portion and all that kind of stuff, you know, today's energy budgets, that's, that's where the money's going. There's just no other way or else, the rest of it is just trying to take care of our employees. You know, a- again, like we always talked about, and we all know this, but people, if there's anybody watching out there, we can set, you set the preliminary budget and then we can always move backwards from that preliminary budget, but off of this pre-line budget, that is what the tax estimates go out as.
Yeah.
So it's nice to get it as close as we can so that we don't get people.
And it is, because those people come back.
Cause it's kinda confusing, yeah.
And we have people that are trying to prepay because they're leaving for the winter.
Oh, yeah.
So if we can get it really close.
Yeah. In, in thinking about it, the, the only place to me where we could maybe save something is if we, if we, maybe pulled some one-time expenditures or something of that nature or tried to offset some, you know, we had a little bit of COVID money or something, but I, I don't know how, I don't know how we're gonna get it much lower off of unless we either decide we're going to move up for wage upper or we, I don't know, law enforcement centers get faster, law enforcement. I don't know.
I do have a question on the, the wage stuff. I know we agreed to like a four percent.
Yeah.
But I have kind of a, we did a four percent plus a step. My question is, I'm not a hundred percent tracking on how the steps work, but are the steps supposed to be on performance?
Yes.
So we're basically given a four percent because of living costs, so we're just giving a step? Wasn't that, the, the step should be on a performance.
The step is all based on the performance on the department head.
Okay.
So we're, we're allowing for the possibility of a step, but that all depends on the depart, department head reviewing those employees every year.
Well, I just wanna make sure I'm tracking that, if, if they, if they go in and evaluate an employee and they feel they're not ready for the step, it's just not an automatic thing. No, okay, we're just giving that offer, cause you know, I got asked that question, are we just allowing, oh, you're just getting a step increase and you haven't earned it? You're a new employee, you just automatically get a step increase, you know, that was a question I got, I said, I don't know, I have to ask that question because I'm not tracking. And I understand the four percent is because of living costs, and I know some people are maxed out on steps because they've been here for a long time or whatever. But I just don't wanna, of course, a new employee, all of a sudden they're moved up so fast and now they're maxed out at age thirty, let's say, just using an example. And then they're the ones that are coming in here, well, you know, my step is maxed out and I can't get anymore besides the living cost, we don't wanna move that on so fast that.
Well, our, our step structure right now is spread out to what, thirty?
Twenty-five.
So, if you started year one here and you started, say we started even yet, because you had experience, we came in, you started at a seven or something, it's gonna take you eighteen years of employment and positive reviews to get to that top end of the scale. So, that's.
And that's the whole point, that's the point, so that.
So we don't get that.
You still give a good performance for the, the community, basically.
Yeah, and the steps, so not everyone's gonna get the same raise, so like if you're capped on the steps, you're gonna get the four percent cost of living. If you're on the bottom end of the steps, the steps are structured so that we can catch up people on the low end of the wage scale, it's a median number, and then once you get to the median number, it actually slows down just a little bit, so.
And the reason I ask is, you know, we're doing this survey, so if that step is like that, we, we're probably gonna come in and. We should be.
Pathetically, yes.
You know, I, I just wanna make sure that.
Well, the step structure.
Understanding and the public's understanding that it's just not, okay, we're gonna give them.
No, no, well, me, I, I guess basically my thought has always been we're allowing the possibility of the step.
I'm tracking.
Plus the four, uh, but that all depends on, you know, and, and there's structures as well in our employee handbook where if you don't get the step immediately, then you get a performance plan type of thing, and then after, was it three months or six months? Depends on the plan, but then you can say, hey, we need to see this improvement, if we see it over this next timeframe, then you get the step retroactive, but if not, then you might just get it that year.
Yeah, for some reason, I just wanna make sure that the public understands.
Yeah, and I, and I've got, I agree, for the camera, for everyone else that's watching, that's how that structure works and it, to me, it makes a lot of sense, just because, like you said, it's incentivized. The four percent, we're just trying to keep up with.
Yep.
The cost of everything, which, you know.
So is the new survey gonna have more steps?
We don't.
I mean, is it, we don't know that.
We don't know that.
I think they're gonna give us a baseline, or you know, the salary structure in terms of the costs, and then I think we're gonna at that point have to, you know, talk to Brian, but I think we're gonna, I guess I will be. But, we're unlikely, but he does have to make a determination then on, do you wanna keep it at twenty-five steps, do you wanna try to stretch it? I mean, I guess, just my opinion, but, you know, we've got a lot of really good long-term employees, so maybe stretch it, I mean, we've stretched it once since I've been here from twenty, I think, to twenty-five, make sure we can take care of people. It might be worthwhile to stretch it again, but that's something that you can.
You know, the other end, there has to be a cap eventually.
Eventually, yes, the, the whole thought process would be, I think, if you stretch it out on the top end, you would just be basically saying, we're gonna give an extra half percent or whatever on each of those five years, so it's not gonna make it drastic.
I shouldn't say a cap, you would be capped on the step, but you won't be capped on.
You'd still get consequences, yeah.
Absolutely.
But the whole point is, you know, when you have long-term quality employees, you don't wanna, you know, but yeah, you have to limit them per job description as well, you can't just yeah, keep jacking the price up on a job description, everybody, extra half percent for five years, only it's one and a half percent of the job.
Basically, the way I understand the survey is they're going in there evaluating each position to see where that value is on civilian side and other counties, is the way I understand it, that's the way it are. Per, uh, per job, you know.
Per job description, and that's why they're working on specific job descriptions so they can match up to other entities and say.
And that's why it takes so long.
Yeah, because we might be asking.
And that's kind of hard too, when you think about it, because we have some offices that in a different county do different things. You know, in Ramsey County, we do this, well, we may go to Walsh and they don't do that in the treasury office, it, you know, so that's really hard to compare county to county.
That's why I'm hoping that the survey team's looking at, oh, not just county, we're probably looking at the civilian side.
Well, they're gonna look at comparable city, like, you know, different governmental entities, they're gonna look at a broad spectrum.
And maybe how many people work in each office.
Yeah. Yeah, because we, you know, we're, we're streamlined really tight here for.
Oh, yeah.
With a lot of.
Between the auditorium for every chair.
Lot of one and a half or two, two and a half person offices, so there's a lot of responsibilities that go on each individual, so you know, they, they should be compensated accordingly, they did a lot of work for you out there, is, is the whole.
And it works, what we have works.
Yeah.
But we have to make a schedule.
Yeah, cool.
It'll be very scheduled.
Yeah, like, right, like you said Candy, when you started calling people really often, it was like, one, two, three, four, or five. So five, we're down to two and a half. Oh, or, yeah, two and a half, you know, you're saving one and a half on treasures.
Yep, and the same, we started out with, there was four of us.
Yeah, so I mean, that's.
But we're automated right now.
Because of the automation, it's a pretty good win for your buck, it's a county actually that citizens get, when they want to work, it gets put out for one and a half or two and a half people, that's pretty, that's pretty. So.
You know, the biggest budget is the roads, but we started cutting roads and.
I don't know.
We can never catch up.
Well, yeah, my, my only question would be is we're not, and we can't, obviously, we don't know if the periodic money's gonna show up or not, but can we account for that portion of that? Or, you know, cause we know we're gonna get paid a portion of it, we don't have that included in the budget anywhere, correct?
I don't know, but it looks like we are gonna get it, but.
Yeah.
I think.
Wondering about the radio this morning, cause it's coming.
My thought there is we should let that, uh, having a balance in the fund and then spend the balance.
Right.
Okay.
Or it's not guaranteed, it's.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I dare, I, I agree, that, that's kind of the problem with all the structure of it is, is that we don't know if we're gonna get it till after we're budgeted, if we do already, we could account for it in the.
We make it those three months earlier than it.
Well, and we might, we might know by October, when we have to finalize the budget, if we're gonna get it for sure, well, at that point, then we can maybe pull the budget down a little bit accordingly if we get that periodic money. Which is looking good right now, but I just keep, I know things could fall out of bed tomorrow, you never know.
I just know that we've been stretching every year, you know, after the one, after the one. Where do we start not stretching with people thin, you know, with the economy the way it is? I know it's not huge, but it all, with the community, the things that the community is trying to do and and to make it best for the community too, you know.
The economy is uncertain, that's not.
Exactly, it's killing us, it is. All the way across, because everything's expensive, everything that you put in it, double the price, if that wouldn't have happened, we'd be in great shape.
Well, I guess I look at it from this, I, I, I agree, we wanna try to keep best bang for our buckets we can get, but if you look at an equalized mill value from now versus seven or eight years ago, our taxes are lower than they were.
Yep.
And you have to think about it from the process of a dollar today is what, seventy-five cents was worth eight cent, eight years ago. So, back then, we were at a hundred and forty-something mills, and now we're looking at one oh five.
Yep.
So, we're actually in pretty good shape comparatively, mostly, thank, thanking the state legislators for taking social services costs on purpose in the state.
Yes, yes.
Because without them, we'd be at a hundred and fifty mills right now.
Right.
Plain and simple.
And, and hopefully, one day we can get help with, uh, law enforcement.
Now if we hope to.
If, you know, let's say they would even do half, we'd be, that would be all, all of a sudden, we'd, we'd take a million bucks off the top of our butt.
Yeah.
And that's, that's always the thing that frustrates me with the budget, we have to be as, you know, as careful as we can, but we have to provide the services necessary, the government is basically able to function, but at the same point, I always look at it as an opportunity cost, we spend, and we have to fund law enforcement center, but there's, if, if we had those additional million dollars, what could we do with them? Increase our road budget or something to make our roads a little bit better in certain spots, or, you know, spend some money here or there to do something that maybe we'd like to get done, but we just keep pushing up and pushing up, cause we just are always trying to keep a, a reasonable number in place, and that's where it gets frustrating, I think, at least in my life, we model this. Yeah, and we've got those art funds that are gonna help offset some of those things, like the generator and things like that, so that's gonna be helpful, we can make an investment hopefully in our facilities, you know. That's one of the things we talked about when we were actually was in here recently, and we should be able to cover those things, those art collections. But, I mean.
But to the stuff that's mandated by the state trickles down.
Yes.
So even though you condensed your office, then you're doing more.
Oh, I know.
Correct. Yeah.
And that's where you feel a pain.
Well, and it's, everybody's the same way from that perspective, you know, talk to the state's attorney and the, the state keeps pushing stuff off, obviously, you know, juvenile things and stuff like that, where they have to distract way more than they, they had to ten years ago, I mean, way more things, I mean, it's just, it's the constant battle, unfortunately.
Or if you just keep asking, you hope the squeaky wheel gets some help. You know, I, I don't know, I mean, Jeff was showing a article that.
Well, in county.
One county's in the same situation.
I think we all are, anybody that, any, well, all of us have jails, anybody that has a population center like we are, I mean, it's, it's a simple, simple fact, where there are people. Crime that thinks of such danger happens.
It's a small house, a crime house.
Because if there's nothing to, nothing to do with crime with some places in the middle of nowhere, you're gonna come where the people are in this, and we're a community, we're a hub. So, something like, uh, something like the law enforcement center, which is a necessity, costs more money for us because we're a hub community. I mean, I, I said it yesterday, I was talking with Eric, I think, about that. The, it, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense that it equalizes mill costs, if you're a farmer in North Ramsey County, you farm on Cavalier County side, you farm on Ramsey County side. Your tax bill is higher on the Ramsey County side because the hub community just happens to have, sit in Ramsey County, and that was the same way with social services. Your tax bill was quite a bit higher because the hub community is here comparatively to, you know, we just have more costs than, probably we don't make as.
And then Cavalier County has higher valuation than us.
That is.
So, so they pay more taxes than, than we'll be doing, so.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's a, the concept of taxation and property taxes is an equalization structure across the state, you know, and it's never gonna be perfect, but as an example, you're probably right on that.
I've got some farmers that always say that, they really pay here.
Well, for us.
I know, they're cattle there, so I was like, yeah.
Well, just like the doctor, I'm a regional medical official throughout the, in this area, and they're using the figure of twenty-five thousand for population because in the region that need medical facility. Well, we have twelve thousand, we have about half the population in our town, but look at the other areas, I mean, and using our town.
Probably pushes, it probably pushes us to that twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Where it is, it is that much.
You know, we need law enforcement for twenty-five thousand, really, we have to furnish that, you know, when they came here.
Yeah, good point.
So.
One, one of the basic tenants of government, I mean, it's, government has to provide things like fire protection and, and lease protection and things like that, cause it's not gonna be enough right now, so that's one of the things we do, roads and, and safety.
One of the things that I draw taxes off is the lake bottom. And one of the things that are drawing taxes off is the lake bottom. I mean, if that is underwater, we don't get access from that. They used to, but don't now, so that adds up too, compared to Cavalier County. They don't have lake bottom up there. The lake bottom here is not drawing taxes.
They got their own city issues when they released our state tax book, they've got, uh, what's the forest classification because of the gorge, so none of that is taxable.
It's.
It's taxable, but very low rate, like extremely low rate, and there's people that, you know, are gaining income off of that through rentals and stuff, that they're not paying any pro, or very low property tax. It's always like, it's 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 kind of them issues too. Because the gorge is is, I can't remember what the class, we have some with Ramsey County too, like our stewardship.
Or stewardship.
Or stewardship, yes, it's a state program.
Well, they threw out the figure of twenty-five thousand regional population out that were gonna serve medically. Well, that says, well, we're serving that twenty-five thousand with the law enforcement we have in our own county. Compared to what we've been paying for law enforcement, what we have to do in the future, it's gonna go up, I'm not making excuses. But I don't think anybody wants to defund the police.
Well, it's not an excuse, it's it's an explanation.
Oh, yeah, plain and simple, it's right there, right, you know.
Well.
And I hope we get a regional medical facility too, get that a lot better.
I I think it's, in all honesty, kind of impressive that we keep our infrastructure, everything that we have in as good a shape that our county has. We do considering the ongoing costs we have on things like law enforcement, just because since I've been on the commission, I think our jail bill has probably gone up three or fourfold. And sheriff costs has gone up, state's attorney's costs have gone up, and everything that goes around that, and we're still functioning fairly well. Overall, we're, we have pretty good roads, you know, we do all right, considering.
I thought horrible in the costing. The law enforcement center went over a million.
Yeah.
I only went over two. And population went up some. Like I said, we gotta remember it's a regional law enforcement.
Well, what's our, our local assessment, seven and a half, other, what is this question? So, what do we got here? So, point two. Sheriff said about one point two, I don't know what the state's attorney is at. Four hundred and fifty million. Three point four, three point eight five million. You can state's attorney, sheriff, and law enforcement center over seven and a half million dollar budgets, it's fifty percent budget. It's it's picking people up and, you know, doing what we're doing. And that, like I said, that's the thing that frustrates me is that everyone, I think, has good intent. They're doing their jobs and doing them well, but we just, it's just a circle, and we just keep cycling and picking people up and setting them and then they back out. And we don't provide, we just don't have the capabilities or the dollars to provide the services to try and keep them from doing it again. And some, some people are never gonna want help, some of them do, and they just don't know how to get out of it. And and we just can't provide those services, we just, I mean, just don't have the money.
We're good, good figures here, I don't know, it's a good point. And like you just said, we're going back to, we're servicing population of twenty-five thousand people, and we're paying for it here. And and. I think that should be part of the seller of the legislators, right there, you know. There's other regional facilities in the state, and the whole county is getting blocked with the old deal.
You know, we're down on this mark, that was definitely something we gotta try. On every one of those, you know.
Might not, those things.
I mean, it'd be kind of curiosity to find out where some of these others are, are they at that fifty percent too? I bet you they are.
I'm sure some of them are.
Oh, yeah, and something that comes down to too is, you know, valuation structure and things too, like, I don't even know what cash county's mill is worth, but.
Well, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying the cost.
No, but just percentage of the total bill, yeah, it's.
I bet you they're there.
I bet you we're, we're probably more decided than anybody though, but there's plenty that are in the same boat we are, because, well, even look at, Land Force County is looking at putting an addition on their jail again, and they just, I mean, a whole new jail, ten, ten years or something like that.
They just did, yeah.
So they built a big new jail, and they're gonna put a, they're looking at putting more money into it, they're actually looking at almost like doing sales tax. Really, county, so they can do expansion on the, on the jail, and Gas County, I think, did some expansion work on their jail and some of their art funds, and we're all in the same boat, we're all fighting this battle.
I think they did, I think Gas just approved another fifty million for jail expansion.
We're we're all fighting the same battle.
And, but then again, they got more art money, and that's what they're gonna use some of their art money for.
But again, it's it's the the problem, you got the art money, but God, you'd like to use it on something that's not putting people in the cell, but but you have to, it's it's a necessity of of what we do.
Yeah, it'd be wild ask either.
Yeah, but it can't be, it just can't be.
When the law enforcement center brought the justice county up, their director of their law enforcement and their business person. I mean, I learned more by listening to them on how Ramsey should set the law enforcement up than anybody I've ever listened to. They had the figures, and it was very informative for me, that it really showed me what we should be here.
Well, and I think.
And I'm sure they'd come again, but the justice county runs the whole thing.
I think the way that we're moving forward of jails is further better than of our county also. Seems like the last month has been.
It's coming.
Yeah, it is. But I mean, it's it's coming, if you gapped it, it's recruited and you've got.
Steve was happy with it, the other day he stopped, he's happy with what was going on.
Yeah, he's doing good. And I I think it's gonna work fine.
Basically, we're just gonna get a motion to approve.
Well, unless we think we, unless we think there's a place we can skip.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve preliminary motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Further discussion, questions, opinions, comments?
Well, I know it would be a one-time deal, but would there be an opportunity to take some of our savings and put towards general fund for next year? Because we do have some of those CDs that you mentioned, Lisa, that.
We do, um, you know, it's, that's all, and you look at our general, this stuff, where it's at. And it's not always general money, of course, when Kevin gets money in, or, you know, it's kind of one pot, so it goes in and, um.
But like I said, it'd be a one-time deal, and then we, and then we have to come back and hit taxpayers the following year with
Well, yeah.
additional stuff, so.
Well, and like I've done.
And we have two CDs coming out right now in September.
Basically, due to that one time thing, you're you're banking on that the economy turns. I mean, honestly.
Yeah.
Or you do what we got on the budget now, and and if it turns, next year's a wash.
Yeah, like right now, for instance, we have, so what's our, next year's general fund budget is projected at fifty-two mils.
Yeah.
Yeah, dollars is what, four point eight or something like that, general fund, I don't remember, you had it on the sheet, I saw it.
Four, four point eight oh seven.
Yeah, four point eight oh seven. Right now, our balance at the end of July was one point one nine two million in the county general.
Yeah.
So that's slightly past half year, so.
But you don't know how much we're gonna have to write out for law enforcement.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not like we're sitting on a bunch of additional.
Right, yeah. So what do we think we're gonna get for per diocote?
That should be one point one.
Well, that's, that's right here.
Do we have blue jail? No, that's wrong.
No, that's wrong, no. And we're definitely.
Pretty down funding, is that the what they're projecting, that one million, six ninety-one?
We got the hundred sixty-eight thousand. Yeah.
Data sheet.
It's adjusted a little bit, but that's close.
Right.
Um, one million, six ninety-one, three seventy-four. That's per diocote funding.
And, but we shouldn't get some money back from FEMA, though, some of the projects that we.
Yeah, that's five years old.
We're just saying to help, hopefully it offsets some.
Warden was on the radio yesterday, and sorry, they had a very odd, hot will be full.
I.
Hopefully they do. What I think you're filling up is what Warden is projecting is because of the price of the barrel of oil.
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah.
Filling up faster than.
Yeah, as long as the oil price doesn't fall out of it, I mean, because they always set a very conservative projection for the oil price, I think, in there, fifty-eight bucks a barrel or something, or
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Ninety something now, ninety-five, ninety-four.
Oh, yeah.
It was well over a hundred, but.
Well, once you look at our liability reports, you know, our health insurance.
Yeah.
That went up too, right?
It did, but this is what we have in the account.
Two percent. Oh.
To the book, I mean, we.
Yeah, we've got money sitting in the health insurance account right now, where we could, we could hypothetically.
No, it's, it's done, we have to, we've been taking over what we had to do with social services. It's done okay.
But. You you don't wanna spend that down a year.
But one, one big year or one bad year. Yep, I know, totally. And.
Yeah.
That's gone, but I mean, when he's talking about taking money out of.
And we're based off, what what are we, what are we projecting, twenty, twenty-five hundred or something, I can't remember, but, and we, and we self-insure that too, so we're only paying the stop-loss cost to Blue Cross.
Yes.
So, I mean, hypothetically, you could shorten yourself a little bit, and on the self-insurance side of things, pay the stop-loss cost. But like you said, all of a sudden, if you get a big year like we had like four or five years ago, or get out of that like three years ago, and we overspent by half a million bucks or something, and all of a sudden, you can take it real quick too.
Well.
Especially when you've got a hundred and twenty employees on that.
And and this year, and this year there were a lot of babies born, a lot.
And I don't know about, um.
Well, I mean, it's still. I'm okay with paying for babies.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, it's.
I'm like, I'm pretty big with.
And I know.
I'm comfortable with this budget, I really am.
How about the state aid too, you know, state aid we get, and we divvy it out to the different entities. That was way back in ninety-seven that we had to run a breakout. You know, so you've got some of your commies now too that take that state aid in general fund it. But I know there's some of those entities that are looking for that money also.
What do we get state aid again, I'm sorry?
We get state aid every month now, and that runs.
I know this.
Uh, well, for state aid for next year would be the one million, well, one million, one fourteen.
Well, please, for law enforcement here.
Yeah. But I know, yeah, I know now we've got state aid too, that you've got those entities on there, you got, what gets, you know, there's some fire districts on there, there's, uh, job development, there's.
And what?
No, no.
Yeah, that's in the back of the.
There is townships, we do take an apple around the townships, because when we did that breakout in ninety-seven, they they got, you know, so much.
So where does our state aid distribution go currently? General funding it, or?
No.
No, we do, we cover, there's a formula.
There's a formula, yeah.
And it covers all the different entities and what's left goes into the general.
So what's yours to be like?
Um, I'll say sixty thousand, sixty-five, depends on what we get for the month.
So we go up to one point one, and then we get sixty thousand, or that's down there.
But I know like last year, we got state aid that very end of December, that, what our general funds, I mean, it was still in the red or in the black. I think we would have been in the run of the red, and we wouldn't have gotten that state aid.
Yes, I think, I think the whole world of the story here is that we're not running like some huge
Right.
overages, I mean, we're, we're about where we should be, and we try to budget it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not baking.
No, we're not baking, we're not sending out a bunch of money, so we're just, I wish we were, to a point, to a point.
And I would, like, with the state aid, I would keep it to, like, the different fire districts and stuff like that, but everything else.
Well, and the thing is, we we have a portion of this budget too, we haven't even, we haven't even talked about radios for fire districts and things like that, where are they gonna get the money from?
Yeah.
And the 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 emergency managers will share that money included in their budgets, but Kevin, you just gonna need radios at some point, and.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of expenses going forward that we, it's not, we don't have it off budget, but we just don't know how it's gonna work yet.
And that per diocote money should buy some of the radios.
Yeah, but.
It, yeah.
We can buy his, and they.
Can you use it for that?
But we can use our local dollars to buy the radios and then offset it with the current per diocote.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't think I'd be able to.
Yeah, we're. Well, I think that's where, we come up with a prelim budget like this, with the dollars that we're at, and if we do by October know we're getting some per diocote funds, maybe we can back it down just slightly to get it more in line from where we were last year, with the, you know, with the assumption that we can, you know, backfill some of those local dollars, some of the per diocote money.
Right. But, you know, and and seeing preliminary law enforcement center, I knew that this increase was coming, it just, it makes me sick kind of thing, but it it's one of those necessary evils that, um, yeah.
Well, in all honesty, when Candy sent it out yesterday, I was kind of, I wouldn't say surprised pleasantly, but it was better than I thought it possibly could be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it that way. You know, because we, five hundred thousand to water increase on the law enforcement side, plus trying to take care of our employees, that's pretty much where the whole increase is.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's justifiable, at least in my mind, even if it is painful.
Well, pain painful, but, yeah.
But I think on on our side of it, you can't cut it.
No.
Can't, you can't cut it so thin, because you don't know what's gonna happen next year.
Right. No, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with what we're doing.
You know. Yeah.
Good.
And I mean, that you know.
I guess I call for the question.
I don't know about other budgets going in, we gotta estimate.
I I call for the question.
Okay, the question has been called, I like this, it's rather caring, it's a good time. Question has been called, uh, we have a motion to second for the preliminary budget to be approved, uh, so go for the discussion, we will roll call this one, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Leifah?
Aye.
And the preliminary budget has been approved, and motion carries.
Okay. Budget's hearing date will be September twentieth at nine AM.
We get a motion to a second?
Um, yes.
Yeah. Remote.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to designate Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM as the budget period date for the county house, for this budget period, for the county budget here.
And that's, that's the date that, um, Allen, with District Health President, had asked us to change the time, because.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, and then, but we won't, we won't approve the budget fully until the first meeting in October.
Right.
This is just the hearing date, yeah, public, to come and ask questions.
Yeah, it's to put out a tax, that estimate of tax statements.
Yeah. And to confirm the questions.
Yep.
Oh, that's the timer.
Yeah, yeah, because the, he was having trouble organizing it with the other counties.
Well, usually the first meeting of September, right?
But that's not enough days.
Yeah, it's not a day.
Yeah, well, you can't, you can't submit for the eighth, the seventh of September, so, yeah.
I hear. Seven.
Okay. Okay.
Ultimate days.
Yeah, so we have a motion to second to set that as the date for the discussion. Hearing, no, I'll, here we go, if I say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same as aye, motion carries. Okay. Quick, it's for visitors, delegation, anyone to talk to us, or probably want to talk to us on the twentieth of September. Portfolio, let's start with, Mr. Lisa.
Um, I don't have any portfolio.
Well, I know it's been, well, you got the Heritage Center, what's on that?
Oh. I know. Oh, I know, um, actually, we don't have a meeting until next, what we see here, August, like Monday.
Okay.
Monday, we're gonna have that, and of course, our agenda is, they're gonna apply for somebody through us, and they're all, because of the rope situation, um, it's a pretty small agenda, but, and they're also gonna have another puzzle get together. They had people.
It's always where the few people are.
It was, it's it's kind of bragging, right, to be this done with, and let's. It was. It's it's kind of bragging, right, to be this done with the the two hours and.
Something fun.
Yeah.
A puzzle, jigsaw puzzle competition.
Yeah.
I would do, I would do that, yeah.
I would too, but anyway.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, we talked about the jail. We've been doing all very well there, so. And uh, the jail is good.
Okay. Mr. Brett?
Yeah, I I don't have anything other. I, you know, talked to Steve yesterday and he. Very hopeful that we'll have probably just about double of the employees on correction side of things than we did, you know, a month, six weeks ago. So, looking at fourteen, thirteen, fourteen people coming on board, so. And people that have, that have some CEO training.
Yes.
Yep, and got some experience and they're gonna be having E O C R coming in this sometime this month. And we're hopeful that we get their approval to go back up to a level one type of facility um sometime soon, so.
So does level one get us into black then?
Well, the level one would would take away that ninety six hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Will be able to hold people for a year or three sixty four.
Yeah, three, three sixty four and.
Those are you.
Right, so we we'd get back to that fifty um bed capacity that they have placed us on a year ago. And then hopefully at some point we can get back to increasing that's number so we can get back to the black. What that number looks like is somewhere in that seventy five, eighty uh prisoner capacity. I don't know if we necessarily need to be to a hundred or a hundred and three like the facility can hold. I think that puts a extreme strain on on the facility and employees, so. And we're hoping that we can sometime within the next three to six months get back to a. A level one and then maybe at some point we can get back to that, you know, sometime in that seventy to eighty prisoner capacity where we can be. More self sufficient.
Well, I think that's a long term discussion. I think law enforcement board has to have in terms of what what, what are, what are the goals of the facility?
Yeah.
Like you said, maybe if you stay at eight, we we have less turnover with CEOs and it's not quite so stressful and and you can run the facility with a few outside prisoners, maybe to try to keep that balance. Yeah, long term discussion.
But but I think it's moving in a very positive direction.
Positive, that's good.
Steve Hall is coming next week just for a lock through.
Yeah.
And I told him out there that I wanted to be there when it's done, so. I've got no direct information from him.
Yeah, so they, we're in a positive direction and we are from the airport and they're moving in a positive direction other than. Um, you know, some of the cost overruns are gonna be expected, but um we may not have. May not have enough money, you know, even with the sixteen point eight that we received from there. Um, you know, what we wanted to do with uh build an expansion. And uh, really sad and unfortunate situation is our longtime engineer out there, you know, Brian Jacobson. Passed away suddenly and unexpectedly about a week ago and Brian's been working with us for a number of years. He was with K L J. Uh, before separating going with me done, but Brian was uh, what was he, forty nine years old?
Oh, wow.
Forty nine?
Yeah, um, and so quite a shock to the staff uh that's been working with him, that's worried. Um, sad deal. Uh, Brian was one of those, one of those good guys that you. You had a pleasure meeting there. Um. But uh, moving on from there and we heard from extension today and uh they have some great things going on. I think Lindsey and Sarah are doing a wonderful job up there. Um.
That's good.
Yeah, and you just keep on plugging away, so.
And then the amount of programming they turn out for that office being three and a half people, it's just.
Just to me, it's.
Just amazing amount of programming and off air. Absolutely. It's it's impressive.
But very impressive. And that's all, all I really have, so.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Um, I met yesterday at Lake Access. They're doing some improvements out of Lakewood, fixing the lot out there. Um, had a little discussion with one of the tournaments they had. There was some rain delay and public upset that got clogged up. So they're gonna make some changes there, so that hopefully is taken care of. I met with the fair board week ago or last week. Um, the grants are starting to get to closure hopefully. Um, they're gonna do late September, early October a fundraiser and then they got some plans on. Honor club and like that, whether it's moving on, but it's it's work. It is definitely work. They're finding out that takes time. It doesn't happen overnight. But it is moving forward and it looks good so far and hopefully we can get that. Hopefully we find out some information late October on the grant.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be important.
Yeah, I'm not a grammar nerd. I wanna say they wrote three of them. We're waiting. Other net, at least it's here, I haven't met with our office on the road here with other nets. Boy, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, from me, I don't have a lot either. Uh, well, I haven't been to social services in a couple of months since I was covering law enforcement center. Uh, but I think everything's pretty straightforward there, but uh, we'll be getting through this one. Um. Forward Devil's Lake, we just met yesterday. Um, got some good things going on there. Our our N C P C, so North Central Atlantic Region, that's five or six counties I can't remember. Um, part of the COVID dollars that came through, they have a million dollars worth of uh investment to do in our region. Uh, so Brad has been, I shouldn't say spearheading, but been one of the leaders of that with the economic developers, the other counties. Um, right now, they're looking at using five hundred and fifty thousand of it is gonna go to childcare facility grants. To help upgrade childcare of which about three hundred and ninety of it is actually gonna be used right to Devil's Lake for childcare facility updates and grants. So we're gonna hopefully increase our childcare uh slots again. Um, and. We had a good discussion both day yesterday, county and Devil's Lake in particular is actually one of the better places in the state for childcare slots. So we're doing pretty well in that and we're gonna have good investment uh in that uh amongst a couple of different facilities that are getting larger. As well as uh facilities that are already current and and are just gonna do some updates. That's gonna be great.
Already to camp.
Yeah, there's babies, babies, baby slots, right? That's okay. That's a good thing, cause I think like they said yesterday, our specialist time. Childcare is the industry that lets everybody else go to work, so we need, we need those childcare slots and we're in pretty good shape in our our area. But it's always be nice to get a little bit better, so that's gonna be good. The other four hundred and fifty thousand, I bet they're going to do a whole um job, I can't remember the technical. I don't wanna slaughter it, but essentially they're gonna create a facility that they can move uh like a van type of situation where they'll go out to high schools. And sell job development specific to our region and our community.
It kind of like the book won't be all that Brad was talking about.
To a point, yeah. And and but that's been approved now. Forward Devil's Lake had to make a commitment to a point. Uh, and at some point the county might have to um put a little bit more money in to to meet that commitment. It'll be very minor, like an extra twenty five hundred dollars or whatever from from the county. But they're gonna try to do job development, which I think is, and it's gonna be targeted specific to jobs in our communities. I think to try to keep kids here.
Right.
So I think it's gonna be a good deal. We'll see how it works, but it's. We're trying something, so I guess they're trying something. I shouldn't say we, I'm just. Hope it's a little bit. Um, so from that, that's good. Uh, county health authority, HUD came in and did a, can't remember what the heck it's called. It's a REAP, I believe, is is the inspection. We didn't do super well, but after going through the inspection reports and everything like that. They're very particular about very specific things. Uh, that was Tim's first time going through it. Uh, so uh we learned from it. We're hoping to get a little bit better next time they come back, but. From the standpoint of facilities, everything's safe, but they, they get very, very particular on stuff like if you have a, a one inch lip on a piece of concrete or something like that. They'll knock you up X amount of points and all this kind of stuff. And uh, you know, it's, they're they're just doing their job. But at the same point, those things do lead to some funding things, but I think we're gonna get that straightened out. That was the first, first one we've had like that, so we'll get it straightened out. Um. But other than that, everything over there is going really well. Uh, we actually got our uh vacancy rates are getting a little bit lower. We're getting people into apartments. We're getting turnover a little bit better specifically. Uh, and we're fully staffed, so that's been been great, dude. Um, from a portfolio standpoint within the courthouse since for facilities or uh county facilities, I don't have a whole lot actually. Everything's been going pretty well, but I can gather from visiting with people, so just moving along. Oh, other than that, I think that's all I have for now. A further announcements discussion like that. I think if I have anything else. Well, they're not.
Hopefully I should probably mention, uh, I don't know if you guys heard that FEMA's uh uh rates are seventy five percent federal, ten percent state, and then locals are fifteen percent as well. Where we damage site, we're paying fifty percent. That's pretty typical. You have to hit another threshold, a dollar, dollars before it goes to like ten percent. I don't think we have thresholds. Local match is gonna be fifteen percent, I think.
Okay.
For the township ones today, I have to come up with that.
Yep, any township, schools, whoever.
The townships are gonna have to figure out, you have to cash here and there on some of their roadside. Okay, very good. Further announcements? Hearing done? I'm not missing anything. You ready, John? Mr. Moore?
Well, we're joined in Germany.